So I'm going to call the meeting to order. Calling the regular meeting for Temple City, January fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. To order, Happy New Year, everyone. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sternquist?
Here.
Mayor Yu?
Here. So pursuant to Assembly Bill three sixty-one, signed by our governor. Cities allowed to hold city council meetings via teleconferencing, and members of the public can observe and address the meeting telephonically or electronically. To listen to the meeting telephonically, please call one six six nine nine hundred six eight thirty-three. Meeting ID eight one 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 eight five eight two one eight four, passcode seven eight eight one five five. Or through the city's live webcast on YouTube Connect with TC. So for those calling in, your audio will be unmuted during public comment, and when public comment is open during an agenda item discussion. Public comment emails received part two or during the meeting will not be read out. Would not be a readout, but will be included on the record. So at this time, we're very happy on our first day of two thousand and twenty-two to have Mr. Jerry Jimbasian to lead us in prayer. Mr. Jerry Jimbasian is the owner of Wonder Cleaners and Draperies in Temple City. And Mr. Jimbasian, please lead us in prayer.
Thank you, Mayor Yu. Let's set a bow and prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you in this new year, once again asking for your blessings upon tonight's council meeting. You have gifted each one of our council members with the gift of integrity, discernment, and decision-making. I pray that you would grant them the wisdom to make the right choices for all the citizens of Temple City. We have come from two years of uncertainty, including sickness, hospitalizations, lifestyle changes, business disruption, and hardships. And yet, we are resilient people. Oh, Father, I pray that this current surge would finish quickly, and we could get on with life as we once knew it. Lord, we continue to pray especially for our first responders, hospital workers, and our sheriffs at Temple Station, our firefighters at Engine Forty-seven, and our servicemen and women all around the world protecting the freedom that we enjoy. And lastly, dear Lord, I pray that you would watch over the three children that witnessed their mother's tragic passing. Nothing, including time, will ever erase the horror of that morning. I pray that two thousand and twenty-two will be a new year of peace and health. And we ask this all in your name and for your glory. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jimbasian, for the invocation. At this time, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic. One nation, under God. Indivisible. Liberty, justice, and justice.
Okay. Next item is there are no matters. There is none tonight. And next item is public comment item not listed on the agenda. And so the time for public comment starts now. I'll ask any member of the public watching at home to call in at the Zoom number. Once you're on, the city clerk will make sure you're able to speak. Madam City Clerk, are there any public callers?
Mayor Yu, there is one caller in addition to Mr. Jen Basian on the line, and we request to unmute if they wish to speak.
So any caller would like to address the council for public comments? When nothing from the public in the reasonable time haven't been given for them to call in, I will close public comment, move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent calendar. All consent counter items may be approved in a single motion as recommended. Unless removal for further discussion. If members of the city council or persons in the audience wish to discuss any matters listed on the consent calendar, please address them at this time. I'll ask any members of the public watching at home to call in at the Zoom number. Once you're on, the city clerk will make sure you're able to speak. Now, while the public is calling. Somebody speaking?
Mayor Yu, one of the caller's lines been unmuted, and they're now back on mute.
Okay, all right. So while we're waiting, are there any council members' questions for staff? Madam City Clerk, I believe at one time we got an email that there somebody would like to address the council item, consent item. Item seven C.
Yes, Mayor, caller's line is now unmuted. May I ask the caller for their name, Mayor?
Yep, please.
Caller five eight 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 three two five, could you please state your name, and are you interested in speaking?
Hi, yes, my name is Alexine Lynn McKenzie. I am the president who emailed in. I'm interested in speaking on item seven C.
Okay. Yeah, you can speak on it when we get to that item. And are there any other requests to, for discussion?
Mayor Yu, there are no other callers besides Ms. McKenzie and Mr. John Basian.
Okay. Why don't we touch on seven C real fast before we move to approve the entire calendar? So seven C is the second reading adoption of ordinance number twenty-one dash ten fifty-nine implementing provisions of SB nine, Assembly Bill nine relating to urban land splits. So before we start, let me ask our community development director, Remus, for any remarks or presentation?
Sure. So the city council heard this, had the initial public hearing on December twenty-first, at which time provided a presentation, and the city council provided a public hearing on the, on SB nine. The state law went into effect on January first, and the city council, in response to that, adopted an urgency ordinance so that the city's rules would be in effect in place prior to January first. So we have an urgency ordinance that's in effect right now. That will be set aside within the next thirty days. And then what's on the council's agenda tonight is an ordinance that will make that urgency ordinance basically permanent. The staff report that was provided to the council highlighted that there are certain pieces of this legislation that the city cannot waive. But where the city has discretion, the city council has looked at adopting an ordinance that would ensure that new housing is affordable, and that it would meet the city's environmental benefits, and try to balance the need for neighborhood compatibility. So with that, I'm available if the city council has any additional questions.
And I would just like to step in. If the council does have questions beyond what Mr. Remus has said and beyond what Ms. McKenzie offers in her comments, I would ask at that point that you pull item C from the consent agenda. Hear it separately, but first approve the rest of the consent agenda as a sort of standard in these circumstances.
Well, okay, well, I've been kind of taking it out of order, so why don't we go back to what we should have done? Was to approve the consent calendar except item seven C. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar except seven C?
Make a motion. Go ahead, William.
Thanks, Cindy. I'll move to approve the consent calendar minus item C.
A second.
So consent calendar has been moved and seconded except for item seven C. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sternquist?
Yes.
Mayor Yu?
Yes, so the consent calendar, or then seven C, has been approved. Now coming back to item seven C here, and thank you, Mr. Remer, for the presentation. I will start with asking the council for any further questions on this item, starting with Councilmember Chavez. Do you have any questions?
No questions.
Councilmember Mann?
No questions.
Councilmember Viscar?
No question.
Mayor Pro Tem Sternquist? You're on mute.
No questions, thank you.
And I don't have any questions either. So at this time, I'll open public comment, and I will call it on, while it's time for public comment, I'll ask anyone watching at home to call in at the Zoom number. And once you're in, the city clerk will make sure you're able to speak. So at this time, I'm going to ask Ms. McKenzie to speak. Please unmute your phone. You have three minutes to just say counsel.
Hello, just, I still on?
Yeah, you're on. Yes, yeah, please, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much, and thank you, councilmembers. Good evening. Thanks for letting me speak. So, yeah, I have, I'd like to speak on the proposed ordinance. I, so I can appreciate that, you know, the city has been put in a position that it's not certain about due to SB nine. Maybe some things that would not be ideally preferred by the city. But I do think, I do have some serious concerns about some aspects of this ordinance as it's proposed. And also some proposals for maybe some other considerations. So my primary concern is the lack of parking, which I would say seems pretty arbitrary and punitive. Combining that with the requirement for LEED Platinum certification, which is well beyond normal requirements for the city. And then the required biannual inspection, so that's under Section B, number ten, requiring for inspections every six months to ensure the property owner is living on site. That, I'm concerned, actually might directly contradict SB nine, which prohibits local agencies from imposing any additional owner occupancy standards due to the existing affidavit signing, which creates the crime of perjury for not being an owner occupant there. So in the big picture, you know, I think actually Councilmember Mann said this at the last city council meeting on this issue, that with all of these restrictions in place, it just doesn't pencil out that this development could ever be feasible. And, you know, while I can understand that might sound desirable to some, I just do note that the state has been very, the state and the number of housing groups have been very strong in coming after cities. And I actually think this is a great opportunity because it's not that much density for Temple City to focus in on using its code to pursue the kinds of development that it would like to see. So, for example, if you're concerned about affordability, I would say, you know, keeping the affordability requirement, taking away some of the other requirements that increase development cost, you know, that might be a good option. If one of your primary concerns is neighborhood aesthetics, you know, that's something that you certainly could focus on. But I think this combination of restrictions that basically leads to SB nine being unfeasible in Temple City, it's, to me, that's just not the correct approach on this, so. I appreciate you for letting me speak. And one thing, one further thing I will say is, because you have the urgency ordinance existing currently, I think it would be prudent to take some time, pull this off, as you have pulled this off the consent agenda, maybe bring some of these concerns back, particularly the one about Section B, number ten, in the proposed ordinance, because I do think that's a direct legal conflict, so. Yeah, I hope to see this, this ordinance change used as an opportunity to improve housing in Temple City and give more access to more members of the Temple City community to potential homeownership and becoming part of our wonderful community.
Again, Ms. McKenzie, thank for those comments. I'll first, before I go back to the city council, want to see if there are any other callers. Madam Clerk, I don't see any other callers, do you?
Mayor Yu, besides Mr. John Basian and Ms. McKenzie, I do not see any other callers.
Okay. All right, I will close public comments. And before I start, perhaps I'll ask Mr. Remus, our community development director, perhaps you may address a couple of the points from Ms. McKenzie.
Sure. I think there's two points that Ms. McKenzie made that are particularly of interest. And one was the statement that the city should really focus on the type of development that the city would like to see. The city updated its general plan in two thousand and seventeen and added a large amount of growth to the city, but really tried to focus that growth away from its residential neighborhoods and focus it into nodes along major intersections and along major arterials. The benefit of that is that that type of growth is called smart growth. It, it places, it reduces vehicle miles traveled, and it has the least amount of environmental impacts. Unfortunately, SB nine does quite the opposite by spreading out density into areas that do not have a lot of services, which actually increases vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions. So that's, that's one of the things that the city really has tried to do, is try to do some really good smart planning in the past. The idea that this is not that much density is not exactly true. The council should know that in some cases, the density, in fact, that we showed you in the previous presentation was up to thirty-six units per acre, which is our R three density, so that's placing our three density in single-family neighborhoods. And if the ordinance, and if SB nine was put into place, it could allow up to seventy-two units per acre, which is some of the highest densities even in Pasadena. So with that, I'm available if you have any additional questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Remus, for the explanation. At this time, I'd like to call on the city council for any final questions or comments, starting with Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mann, any questions or comments?
I think just one, one thing Ms. McKenzie brought up, perhaps this is something Mr. Murphy can help clarify regarding the owner occupied inspections. If I recall, that was part of, was that something that we came up with independent of SB nine, or was that part of SB nine's requirement?
When SB nine was first drafted, it had no owner occupancy requirement. As it went through the process, in order to get enough support, so that it wouldn't be used by commercial developers, you know, large companies, but rather by local residents to subdivide their own property, a, an owner occupancy requirement was put into SB nine. What Mr. Remus has done is crafted an ordinance that ensures long-term that the owner occupancy requirement is being met. Certainly, it's something that we are willing to look at if, as discussed at your last meeting, if HCD or any other entity does take issue with some of the specific terms, we're more than happy to work with them and to bring back to you an amendment. But our office believes that what Mr. Remus has put in the ordinance is supportable and sustainable, and so we're willing to support it before you tonight, as we were last month.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that that was something that SB nine required, and so if that was the case, there would be no contradiction logically with SB nine. That's all, Mayor Yu, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscar, any comments or?
No, no, I have no comments.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Sternquist, any final comments?
I would just like to thank Ms. McKenzie for looking into the issue of SB nine and how that affects Temple City, and for her concern for affordable housing. I, personally, I believe that affordable housing in any city is a very tricky business. There's always going to be people who want affordable housing, and there are going to be those who just feel that affordable housing in their city really takes away the value from their properties. I can't imagine the city of San Marino and how they're going to approach SB nine, but I'm going to be interested in seeing that. But I, I feel that, one of the things I wanted to ask Greg, so Ms. McKenzie can get some clarification, is that we, in developing the ordinance, we really did look into how we could comply with SB nine and do what we could to enforce SB nine the best way we felt for what the residents in, the majority of residents in our city, homeowners would like. But Greg, I think she might have mentioned that the the ordinance somehow contradicts what SB nine's goals were, and that there would possibly be some potential liability with the city for enforcing this ordinance, and I, I firmly believe that's not the case at all. So maybe if you could just clarify that for her.
Yeah, as I said to Councilmember Mann, we've reviewed it. HCD, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, often takes positions that are, you know, slightly different. They may read a statute differently than we do. If they do, they're going to notify us. We'll work with them. We're not in a position where we want to create liability for the city. And as I said, we do believe that this is a support. What Mr. Remus did, and I think did very well, was looked at the purposes behind SB nine, what types of developments it was intended to promote, and it was intended to promote developments that were transit-conscious, that were environmentally sustainable, that were affordable. And so the city has provisions that really push those three areas. If HCD does come in and talk to us and say that they think we push those areas too much, then without speaking for Mr. Remus, I think I, I think that he's on the same page with me. We'll work with them, and we'll bring you revisions that will keep HCD happy. So there's, there's not going to be a situation where there's liability for the city because we're willing to work with the enforcement arm. At the same time, it's important when you put something like this, or when you effectuate something like SB nine, you don't want to make it the Wild West. You want to try and tailor it to the city, as you've said, Mayor Pro Tem, and the city's residents, and what the residents want to see. And you also want to look at what the purposes of that, that state law are. And, and as I said, I think Mr. Remus did a fantastic job. He described it well to you at your last meeting. If you have any other questions, please ask him, just because I'm just really impressed with his work in this regard.
Thank you, Greg. I just want to share while we're on the topic of affordable housing. Jason Pooh, I believe he's either the mayor or past mayor, was just appointed to the position by President Biden, Department of Housing and Urban Development. And he is going to be the director and oversee, I think it's called, it's Region Nine, and covers Arizona, all of California, Hawaii, Nevada, for some reason Guam, American Samoa, and Mariana Islands. But he has been a friend of affordable housing for quite some time. He would definitely be a resource for us to be able to reach out to or give some information. And I will share that Jason, in looking at affordable housing, San Gabriel, the city which he serves on council, was really not in favor of SB nine and the direction that it was taken. I think they, like we did, felt that there were a lot better options that we could look in the future to affordable housing. But I just wanted to share that about our neighbor. So hopefully, some good things will come out of his work since he's so familiar with the San Gabriel Valley. So thank you, Greg. Ms. McKenzie, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I, and now I'd too want to thank Ms. McKenzie for addressing the council tonight, and certainly you have raised some good points. But, but I think like Director Remus had mentioned, I just want to underscore that you talk about giving the community more time to work through the planning issues. And, and like the Director Remus has said, we have spent a lot of time working on our current general plan through a lot of public hearings, and we have refined our planning laws over time, as Mr. Remus had brought back from time to time to the council. So we, whereas SB nine sort of kind of erased that process, and I think one of the main things here, and all of us believe, is local control, that we as a community, as a city, should have our own, be able to set our own rules for development. But yet, at the same time, to underscore what Mr. Murphy had said, that we, we're not trying to come up with something that would erase SB nine. And then Mr. Remus had actually pointed out, you know, the sustainability, the and affordability are some of the key elements of SB nine. So we're trying to meet with that and and really do a good balancing act, and I think what Mr. Rema had proposed, I think is a good balance of, if somebody truly wanted affordability, and we're not going to require them to build parking garages, for example, so to make it more affordable. And obviously, not every lot is suitable for that, and, and somebody should probably pick somewhere that's close to some transit corridors. But, but with that, I think I appreciate Ms. McKenzie's comments. But I, I think I can support the ordinance in front of us. So with that, I'm ready for a motion.
I'll move that we approve our seven C.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, a roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Mann? Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sternquist?
Yes.
Mayor Yu?
Yes. So item seven C has passed. So moving on to our next item on the agenda is public hearing. There is none unfinished business. There is none. We do have a new business that is discussion, possible adoption of resolution. To continue to allow city council meetings to be held remotely, consistent with Assembly Bill three sixty-one. With that, I'll ask Director Remus to lead us in the discussion.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor Yu and members of the city council. You are all very familiar with this procedure now.
Uh, you are all very familiar with this procedure now. Uh, state law requires uh resolution to be passed every thirty days for us to continue having these remote meetings. Uh, the staff report and the findings that were provided. Uh, demonstrate that community transmission levels in the county have increased from substantial in early December to a high level now. And transmission levels have increased from a hundred and eight per hundred thousand in early December to five hundred and nineteen per hundred thousand to um within the last week. So the findings are, these are in your resolution for you and they're here for your consideration. And I and Mr. Murphy are here if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, um, Mr. Remus. Uh, I'll start with council questions, starting with Councilmember Chavez. Do you have any question?
Um, you know, many times I don't think this is very relevant, but I'm going to ask the question anyway. Uh, and that is, are we keeping track of what other neighboring cities are doing? We know who's meeting virtually and who is not and those who are not meeting virtually. What, if anything, they're doing to ensure the safety of the public and the members who attend?
Go ahead, Scott.
Go ahead.
We we can definitely provide the city council a survey of the local jurisdictions around us and what they're doing. I know just off the top of my head that uh the city of San Gabriel is continuing to meet virtually.
I I do know that the city of Alhambra is as well. I know there are several cities that have gone back. Uh, in person. I I know personally of one city that. Uh, canceled all of its commission meetings for this week so that the council could consider it its next meeting. Uh, a a resolution just like this, uh because they want to at least provide a hybrid option. So that perhaps the public wouldn't be in the room, even if staff and uh their commissioners and council were in the room. Uh, but they had a number of commissioners who have been meeting in person, but now are are more edgy about it. So I I I do know that the city clerk's office and Mr. Cook have that information and and they can get that to you. Um. Uh, but I don't know whether uh the clerk's office has it on hand right now.
Yeah.
I know the city of Monrovia is still virtual, but I'm not sure about um, I think Duarte is hybrid. But those are the only two I know for sure about.
What does that mean, hybrid?
Um, they they alternate, so they have three council members in at one meeting and then the, well, they have seven now. So they'll have three council members at one uh council meeting, the first council meeting of the month. And then four at the next. And I I don't know what the social distancing is for the audience, though.
And and councilman, it it hybrid really can mean a lot of different things. Uh, in some cases, cities are using it where they have a small council chamber and it's a way to allow the public. Uh, to distance in the council chamber, but still to participate via Zoom. Uh, if the chamber gets too full, which it can do quickly if you're really distancing. Uh, I know some cities use it if a council member tests positive and doesn't want to come into the chambers in any given week. Then by continuing to have the resolution in place, that council member can take that meeting at home. And then when they test negative, they'll be back uh in chambers. Usually those chambers will have plexiglass between the council members as well as between the staff. Um, I know Mr. Cook has prepared the council, your council chambers. Um, but again, I don't know exactly what he's done because I haven't been in there.
Well, you know, the the only reason I bring this up is that um. You know, I've been a, I guess, kind of the lone voice here regarding getting back. Into uh our council chambers for the sake of community engagement. And I also read the newspapers and follow the news regarding um, this uh most recent variant and the. Um, severity of it, of course, um. But it seems to me like we've, it seems like we've just taken an all but all but all or nothing approach. It's either we don't meet at all, or I mean, it it seems like other cities are thinking outside the box and looking at. Other ways of perhaps uh finding ways of engaging our public uh without necessarily um. I don't know, going back to what we had before, which obviously is probably going to be a a long time from now, given the. Given what's going on in our world today, but uh. I would just, I would just be interested to see if there's a, you know, we get this once a month and it's, like I said, it's. It's just an all or nothing thing. It would be nice if somebody would maybe put something else out there, the some some possible uh. Scenarios that we could uh take a look at. Um, but again, that's for future meetings. Thank you, Mayor Yu.
Uh, thank you, uh, Councilmember Chavez. Uh, Councilmember Mann, do you have any questions for staff?
I know I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Viscara, any questions?
I have no questions.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Sternquist, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, I too don't have any questions. So uh at this time, I will open up for public comments. So I'll ask any members of the public watching at home to call in at a Zoom number. Once you're on. The city clerk will make sure you're able to speak. Uh, Madam City Clerk, uh, are any public callers offering comments?
Mayor Yu, we have one public caller, Mr. John Bazian. I've requested him to unmute if he wished to speak.
All right, you know, okay. So I see him shaking his head. So we'll give it a little bit more time. So we're nothing more from the public in recent time have been given for them to call in. I'm gonna, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council for final discussion. Uh, starting with uh Councilmember Chavez for final questions or comments.
No, thank you, man.
Okay, uh, thank you, Councilmember Mann.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Yu. Just uh one, one interesting point to share as, as you all know, uh, I work for. LA County Public Works as as the mayor you. And um, we were supposed to all return to the office, um, I believe it was next week. There there was a set date where, you know, we're we're in the old Sears corporate building off of Fremont. Uh, and and so for the past couple of months, there was this targeted January tenth. Um, a hundred percent of everyone who worked in the office wasn't, was going to come back. Uh, and just last week, they went the exact opposite direction and said. Everyone stay remote. Um, the exception being, you know, s- certain people in in certain positions. So I I've still been in the. Uh, so but I I I bring that up mainly because um, you know, we see different agencies respond differently. Um, and. I think what we've learned, at least from COVID, is that. Whenever you have a new variant, there just isn't enough information to make any great conclusions. And so a- at least what I've seen, uh, our council in our discussions is we we've been taking more of a cautious approach to. To this. Um, I I. I I actually agree with Councilmember Chavez. So I I think. We we know there are members of the community that that prefer in-person meetings and. Uh, they feel like this type of uh setting just doesn't allow them to communicate or or connect in the. So, you know, I I I think just given the current state of this, um. You know, it's probably in our best interest to to push it back, but uh at the same time, I I would agree. I I'd be interested to see what some of our. Neighboring cities are doing and the reasons that they're doing it. Um, I'll kind of to add to the list, I know Monterey Park. Uh, is is meeting remotely. Uh, in fact, recently they had their rotation for mayorship and that was done remotely as well. Um, so I mean. I I think we all know, we 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 love some of our ceremonial presentations and bringing in. Members of the public in to celebrate honor so forth. And and that's kind of part of the fabric of who we are. Um, but I think in in these really exceptional times, um, we do consider uh. What what's uh more important. Um, and in this case, it's it's uh picking a cautious approach to. Uh, a variant that we we know something about, but uh again, we we don't know the full extent of um. Uh, of Omicron at this point. Thank you, Mayor Yu.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Viscara, any comments?
Well.
I'll find the questions.
In in hearing Councilmember Chavez speak and and uh and Mann. Uh, I was thinking about this and I'm wondering if maybe we shouldn't consider. Um. Some kind of 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 a a threshold number or something where. We base whether we come back or not on, say, I don't I don't know what other indicators there are, but um. Using maybe, if there's a a reduction in the positivity rate for LA County. Below a certain number that we revisit and reconsider whether we go back or not. And as long as it stays high the way it is now, we don't. Uh, I'm I'm sure there's some scheme that we could develop that that maybe maybe would work. In fact, it uh today I heard on the radio, I'm sorry, on the news. That uh France just discovered a third variant. And hopefully, we won't hear too much about that, or maybe we will. But um. Looks like we could possibly have a yo-yo effect here on on on. On the infections throughout the year. I don't know. So maybe we could consider doing something like that. If it goes below, you know, five percent. Then we can feel relatively comfortable that have a meeting safe. But as long as it stays where it is now, um, then we don't. So anyway, that's something to consider. Maybe you want to take a look at uh.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Viscara. Um, Mayor Pro Tem Sternquist, any uh final questions or comments?
I don't have any. Thank you.
Um, I'm like you have a cold, Cindy.
I do. You know, it is a cold, fortunately, but if COVID variant is worse than this cold. I feel sorry for all the people who have it because this cold has been miserable. This is the fifth day, but I'm not positive for COVID, so.
Yeah, well. Well, thank you, uh, uh, Member Tim Strangus. But speaking of cold and infection, you know, um. Um, I would um, second what the Councilman had said. Um, I mean, the the data has shown. Uh, a lot of corporations were supposed to return full time to work. Everybody come back January tenth. But all the research has shown that all the major corporations are delaying that. Um, I have actually got some statistics on the number of people who who got sick just in the last couple of days at my in my building. Uh, numbers are astounding. There are just a lot of people getting sick. And what's interesting too, and and anecdotally, I have a staff member who was fully vaccinated and boosted. But she still came down with uh Co- COVID-like symptoms. So. There are a lot of unknowns about this uh Omicron uh virus, and I think it's good, like Councilmember Mann said, is to proceed um. Cautiously, you know, I I'm more concerned, I mean, on one hand, we want to make sure we are able to, the public is able to reach us. But on the other hand, I'm also concerned about not just our own safety as city council. We are a small city and typical during a council meeting, we have all the department heads with us, so. Um, we are a small group, so certainly we need to make sure our um city staff are not too much impacted. And maybe to Councilmember Chavez's point, maybe in the future, should we come back? Maybe we should look, could look at a hybrid approach where we don't have all our department heads here. Uh, in the same room with us. Um, yeah, so somewhere that we can protect our staff. Because at the end of the day, we cannot provide service to our public if our staff are not feeling well. I mean, we just look at. All the um flights that got canceled over the New Year holidays and because it's just not enough. And uh, I think we all know somebody who has who has somebody, either friends or relative, who are actually coming down with COVID, so. So presently, I would be in support of continuing um, meeting remotely. And then um, perhaps staff can bring back a recommendation like been. What um, Councilmember Chavez and Councilmember Viscara had brought up, is some kind of a indicator. Uh, for us to consider next time.
So Mayor, Mayor Yu, if you don't mind, I just, just one, one other thing. I think, and just, just, I think, I don't think uh Brian, Brian Arizumi is not on tonight, is he?
Um, I don't see him.
Uh, because, you know, I I think we have already been using indicator and and that is the county's ranking. As as a high and and we're still in what they call a high um, uh. Community transmission level. And I believe that has been the indicator that we've been been using for. For a while and and have talked about that a few times until it, until it gets out of that mode. And there are several modes or several levels, of course, that the county uses, but I know that we've been using that, which is okay, but. I don't know if anybody, everybody saw the report, I think it was in the, either in the LA Times or the Daily Journal this weekend, that. Just counting the numbers of of uh cases may not be the proper metric anymore for this uh. For COVID. Um, uh, you know, and and of course, you can argue one way or another, but. It it because of the sheer number and the increase, of course, we haven't certainly seen a corresponding increase. Necessarily in the hospitalizations and or the deaths, so uh hopefully that's a good sign, but um. At any rate, um, you know, I just thought I'd mention that, that we, it looks like we, we already are, and I sure, um. If Brian Arizumi was here, he could probably explain that a little bit better than I have regarding the metric that we're using as far as the community transmission, but. Anyway, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you for that additional comment. So to. Does anyone want to propose a council motion?
I I would.
Oh, go ahead, Tom.
Thank you. I I would propose a motion in light of the uh, in light of the uh uh. Transmission level increase, which is raised raised significantly, of course, over the past few weeks. I would make a motion that we um, uh, continue to allow the city council meetings to be held remotely, consistent with Assembly Bill three sixty one.
Okay, and then uh, Resolution number two, two, five, five, seven, six.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And then um, Councilmember Viscara second that, did I, right? Okay, so Madam Clerk, uh, roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sternquist?
Yes.
Mayor Yu?
Yes, so we will continue meeting remotely uh for another thirty days. Uh, next item on the agenda is update from the city manager, so I'll ask um Director Remers to um, give us the report.
I think the only comment uh Brian asked me to provide was to wish you all a Happy New Year. Um, and the council, the, not just the council, but also to the community. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Uh, update from the city attorney, uh, Mr. Murphy, any update for us?
I I would would echo uh the wishes for a Happy New Year to the community. I also will say that I I forwarded to uh Mr. Cook a legislative update. Uh, and I believe um, Ms. Chan is going to prepare, uh, take that and her own research and prepare a legislative update for the council to come to you in the next month or so. So you'll get a whole bunch of download on all the new laws I, from her in a much better fashion than I could provide tonight. So uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Um, next item is council reports regarding at how or standing committee meetings. So I don't know if anybody met last week during the holiday weekend, holiday week. Um, saying none, I will move on to next item. Could you sit council items separate from the. items separate from the city manager's regular agenda, starting with Councilmember Chavez?
Thank you, Mayor Yu. You know, I, I started, I, and I don't know why, but rather than wishing everybody a happy new year, I want to wish everybody a better new year. You know, maybe that's, maybe that's what we need. And, and I'll never say it couldn't get worse because I guess it can, you know, so we better wish, be careful what we say. But let's hope it is a better new year. I, you know, I, I think it will be. I think, you know, we, we, we will continue doing everything we can, of course, and that's within our control to, to keep our city safe and keep it, keep it working. And also, Scott, I think you did a great job tonight. I told Brian that I would keep it easy on you and I wouldn't, you know, start getting sweating or anything, but you did a good job.
Thank you.
Did a good job. I knew you would handle it well. So thank you. And that's it. Thank you, Mayor Yu.
Thank you. Councilmember Man, any items from you?
Yeah, I couldn't think of any, like, tough questions to throw at Scott tonight. So I guess I'm going to lose out on this opportunity. But I'm sure we will, we might get more of that in the future. So just a warning shot there, Scott. But anyway, um, yeah, I, I too want to wish everyone a happy and, as Tom said, a better new year. You, you know, with, with COVID going, I, I've been talking to a lot of more of my friends and colleagues who are in the medical field, either doctors, nurses, et cetera. And it's really interesting to kind of hear not just their stories, but also kind of just learn a little bit more about, you know, where, where, where is the medical field coming from when they're approaching, you know, you know, Omicron? And, and so often, we, we hear a lot of people say, well, if the variant isn't so bad and it's just, you know, like the common code and flu, then you know, perhaps at, at one point, everyone's just, just going to get it, right? And, and the, I think the issue with this idea of like continuing to transmit the variant is it just gives it more opportunity to mutate. I think that's, that's what's really scary about COVID is, is the, the high transmissibility also somewhat correlates with this high propensity to mutate into a variant that has unknown properties until it actually happens. So, so, you know, the silver lining to all this is like, like Tom mentioned, the news has been reporting Omicron, but it seems like the symptoms aren't as bad, your hospitalization stays aren't as long as when Delta was raging or when COVID was initially hitting. We're not getting the same type of, you know, no more hospital beds for, for patients that really need it. And I think that's, that's a, you know, trying to, me being an optimist in a lot of things, I'm trying to look at the, the brighter side of, of all this. So, so, yeah, I, I, I hope we, we get better news soon and, and that, you know, I think everyone here on council very much wishes to be, you know, back, back to normal. I think even, you know, prior to the Omicron surge, we had a number of community events that were well-attended. And I think we all enjoyed, you know, seeing everyone in person and talking to everyone. I certainly missed that. So, yeah, let's hope, pray for, for better days. And just, I, I did have maybe one quick thing and I'm not sure maybe Director Matsumoto, I, I see him on, on the line. But I, I wanted, I was wondering if the rains had affected any progress on the primrose construction or if we're still on schedule, more or less.
Yes. Yes, Councilmember Mann, this is Adam Matsumoto. The project itself, we did obviously have some impacted days where we didn't have workdays due to the rain and, and in some instances, the, the day after because of excessive muddy conditions on site. We are meeting with the project management team and the contractor this Friday to go over the timeline. The other thing that may have some impacts, which we're experiencing across all levels right now is the COVID protocol impacts. As of right now, we haven't lost any days due to protocols, but it is something we're keeping an eye on right now. So I should have an update and that would go to the city council and the weekly reports after our meeting on Friday.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Man. Councilmember Viscara, any items from you?
No, ju- just more of, of kind of the same, an addendum to what William was saying. It's true about the new variant not being as severe, but that's to people that have been vaccinated. Still have a huge problem with unvaccinated and those folks are still getting very sick and dying. That's something to remember. And personally, my family has been hit pretty hard. Over, over Christmas, we had five, my, my two granddaughters, my two, my two daughters, my daughter's mother-in-law all came down with the COVID. So there was no Christmas to speak of. And then last night, we found out that my nephew and his daughter both came down. So we have seven family members that are being hit. And, and pretty strongly, very sick. They got very sick. They're, they're, they're rounding the bed and starting to get better. But they've all been, they, they all had the three shots. And, and, and yet that happened. But if they hadn't had the shots, I hate to think it would have happened. So I'm, that's something we have to keep in mind. So I, I guess that's it. I, I do want to wish everybody a happy new year. And as Tom said, a better new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Member Protem Sternquist?
Just one item regarding Foothill Transit. The variant has really struck the bus drivers hard. And we've had to almost, almost every other day, cut service, reduce service again due to the amount of drivers calling in sick. The Arcadia yard specifically has been the hardest hit. Yesterday, there were 45 bus drivers, I believe, that called in that had either tested positive with COVID or had been exposed to someone with COVID. So they're having a hard time keeping up service. So Foothill Transit is in a campaign right now, letting people know by apps on Foothill Transit for people who use the bus regularly. Facebook campaign, just letting them know that due to staffing, routes will be cut and we're, we're all trying to maintain early morning service and making sure that the last routes on all the lines are covered. And cutting some of those lines in the middle, but we don't want the people to be left late at night stuck somewhere. But it's, it's a challenge with Metro also. So that's what's going on in the transit world right now, just trying to keep service as high as it can be. And that's about it.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem Sternquist. And I just want to echo what Councilmember Viscara's point about the vaccination is important to all of us. I mean, even though there are many stories of people fully vaccinated, even with a booster, still come, still came down with COVID. But the symptoms tend to be a lot milder and folks that didn't have it seems to have it hit much, much harder. So I just want to urge anyone that's hearing us who still have not been vaccinated or have not got your boosters, please go ahead and get them. You know, the issue right now is not just getting shots, it's getting tested. All the folks I talked to that need to be tested couldn't find test sites. They're only walk-ins. And who want to stand in line for three hours, hours of a bunch of supposedly infected people? I don't know. So, so the best thing is not to get it. So proceeding prudently, I think is the way to go. And, and again, I want to emphasize that we have a small staff. We've been doing a lot. And my, we have great people in our city. And we want to make sure our staff are remained safe and healthy. And with that, I also wish everybody a very safe and better 2022. So at this time, I'll move on to the next item, which is additional public comments on item not listed on the agenda. And I actually don't see any callers. Oh, I see Mr. Jim Bazian waving his hand. Mr. Jim Bazian, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Since it's kind of a short evening, I'll give a few thoughts.
Yeah.
I miss seeing all of you in the council chambers and I miss taking pictures of proclamations and awards and that type of thing. But we will someday get back at it. But I just want to let you know my thoughts. Probably two weeks ago, I was very adamant, thinking that the council needs to change their mind and go back into the council chambers. And now I've kind of pivoted. And that's because I see so many friends lately that have the COVID. In fact, even today, you know, I've got a niece and, and others that are suffering with it and it's no fun. And we had our Kiwanis Executive Meeting today at Northwoods and we were missing a person there. And she's very sick from a, a bad cold. But soon as you hear that somebody has a bad cold, you get to worry. So and she's one of your Parks and Recreation Commissioners. So I took her a test kit this afternoon. And hopefully she will use it. I think that she's going to. But possibly when you get back in the council chambers, you might think of, you know, just allowing people in the council room that have been fully vaccinated and have the boosters and that can prove it. But boy, I long for that day when we can just get back to normal. But one thing that I probably shouldn't say, but I'm going to say it, and that's only because we have five other elected officials in Temple City that govern our schools. And they do not take the time or the effort or the discussion regarding going back into in-person meetings. It's an agenda item, they vote on it and they go for it. And I always appreciate the back and forth, the give and take that this council takes in because it is a personal issue. And we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing to protect you, protect the staff and to protect the citizens of Temple City. And if it's going to take a little extra time to do it, I'm all for it. I'm 78. I don't want to get in the hospital and get COVID and I'm being very careful now and wearing the mask more than I did two weeks ago. Normally, we have 300 people in our worship service in San Gabriel. And when I attended on Sunday, we had 188. And there are a lot of people that did not attend and cannot attend because they're suffering with the COVID. So we did receive an email from the church today saying that that was the case. So congratulations to you. You're doing a good job and I miss you all. And there's some good stuff coming up like Lunar New Year and other things that we'll be participating in. But congratulations and a good evening to you all.
Thank you, Mr. Jim Bazian. I don't see any other callers, so I'm going to close the public comment. And with that, we adjourned tonight's meeting and wishing everybody a very happy and safe, healthy new year. So see you next time.